It's six thirty-two hundred and we're in the meeting. For the last standing allegations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review, is there anything on the agenda that anyone would like to change or move around?
Um, is this a point to add for a future agenda I used to? Was that maybe not moving that we get that far?
Okay, comments from any select board members, anything not on the agenda?
I just want to say, as I just said to Kelly, I have seen more of the sheriff's department than the last nine days than I have seen of our previous chief in many years, which makes me very happy.
County, anything?
Oh, my goodness, Eric, do I read it, Lord? Thank you.
Citizens, anything not on the agenda? This, Mrs. Arison?
Oh, yes, Patty Arison. Chief Cobb wanted me to make sure that everyone knew that he had written a comprehensive history of the Weatherfield Veterans Memorial, the monument, the monument committee, and the veterans committee. Not least are available at the library and at the historical society, but the library's copy will be the one that will circulate. Anyway, he just wanted me to, to make sure that everyone knew that all questions can be answered.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've been minutes from the previous meeting.
Let's move to them. Um, yes, there were. Oh, there's one place where it says I'm Mr. Henderson. And there was one.
Side of the fireworks display.
Well, see calls for fireworks right there. Nonetheless, something else that was also not grievously wrong, but it's sitting next to the computer.
Motion for approval minutes?
I approve the two minutes.
We changed that minutes to a mister? No, this one for minutes.
So that we approved the minute, uh, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
There a second? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Vowels in favor?
Aye, aye. Oh, I know. Is Gymnast Road, is that still recognized?
Where?
Oh, sorry, are we out of time? Yeah, I'm jumping.
Okay. Motion carries. Application for fireworks display.
Uh, did everyone have an opportunity to review the memo? Any questions for me?
Um, not in terms of this particular case, but in the broad question of fireworks, so let's do it if it's on them.
Okay. Great, uh, the recommendation is to deny the application. It was graduation tonight.
Yeah.
He wasn't able to, maybe over here I did, I have been in communication with him and I told him I'd give him an update tomorrow, so.
Did he, did he have any comments or questions regarding the? Questions that? You, you posed in the, in the memo?
Yeah, there has been ongoing communication. Uh, we did a lot of research and, um, what we found is that the town of Springfield is also in a similar issue. They haven't approved any applications this year. After the Supreme Court ruling, there is discovered that, um, the select board only has the authority to approve supervised public displays. And this is for a, a private display.
The implication being the others can't be held, or we just don't have any control?
Uh, according to the law, the select board can only approve public displays, um, this isn't a public display. So in, in the second paragraph there, in accordance with twenty BSA three one three two, it has been interpreted by the Vermont Secriment Board and also as guidance from the Vermont Division of Fire Safety directs the town is only authorized under Title twenty of the Vermont statutes to issue permits for supervised public displays of fireworks. Um, the way that the town attorneys interpreting that, um, is fairs, holiday celebrations, or other public gatherings.
But this is a private display.
Correct.
So that doesn't apply?
No.
Okay. Um, my, I, I understand. Bash up. I, I think that that the fact that the insurance doesn't feel to cover damages from, from fireworks.
He did contact his insurance carrier and he's waiting to hear back from them on whether they would cover it. But I think based on what I've what we've been talking about with the town attorney and also other towns, if the town granted the firework dedication, it wouldn't be following the letter of the law, and if something did happen, we could be at risk of liability if the damages were beyond within insurance coverage.
So which letter of the law would we not be in compliance with if we approved this application?
It's not a, a public, a supervised public display.
But it's not a public display, it's a private party, right?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm confused.
So it's, the town only has the authority to grant uh, fire permits for supervised public displays, yeah.
Oh, so we can't approve any application for a private?
Correct.
But can we prohibit it? And is that based on, I'm sorry, is that based on the recent Supreme Court ruling?
It was.
Because certainly our, this person didn't stand a chance of complying because our policy says nothing about that.
That is correct. Um, and I did go for that with the town attorney, and the town attorney did issue additional guidance for that if you'd like me to.
Well, I would, yes.
Okay.
Because this isn't, and the Supreme Court decision is not in the state statute, which as of today said it was current to twenty twenty-four. So was this Supreme Court decision since then?
It was the twenty twenty Supreme Court ruling, the town of Colchester, um, versus.
Certainly the language supervised public displays is not in state statute, it's not in our policy. So given that, it's my understanding we approved this application last year.
I, there was no approval for an application last year, there wasn't an application last year.
Right, I think it's a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Okay, so the fireworks that we set up last year were done without a permit.
Correct. Yeah.
I feel better now.
So according to the town attorney, it looks like many of the past applications had North Star fireworks as the operator and they had insurance, so if those were for public displays, I think those permits were appropriate. Even if they were not, the Supreme Court has highlighted that the statute is very poorly written and lacks clarity. So the town will not be bound to approve similar permits going forward, just because it may have done so in error in the past.
I, I think that makes more sense, the fact that this is not a public display. I wouldn't bring into this because I don't think our policy or state statute says that.
Yes, and, and we both, uh, both the town attorney and I do believe the policy needs to be updated. Um, so we're going to be bringing that forward, and there's also been another fireworks application, we're working with, um, with that gentleman to determine whether this is a supervised public display or not. And if it is, we'll be bringing that application forward.
So the lack of a competent operator?
Yep, that's one.
Just despite there being no definition of that, but no one has been identified in this application as being responsible.
North Star fireworks in the past has been the competent operator for.
But in this application, they're not mentioned.
Nope.
So, okay, and the lack of insurance? And we did not have police sign off on this application, if I recall, we had fire department, but not us.
Yes, that, that is correct.
Yeah, I had Josh over here first, have his hand up. Josh, please.
Uh, my question is, is state law, is there a state law that prohibits any type of fireworks that are personal use not for a public display?
Yeah, so if we it's just as simple as, I'm gonna pull this up here.
Please share.
So if you go to just Google, are fireworks legal in Vermont? Um, what you find is in Vermont, fireworks are generally illegal, with the exception of permitted supervised public displays. Um, the use, possession, sale, and distribution of fireworks are only legal after a permit is obtained for a public display. And then if you type in somewhere like Maine, yes, consumer fireworks are legal. In Hampshire. Yes.
Mister Palmer?
So, there's a difference, even when you just, you're going to start.
But, so, just to jump in here, talking about police approval, doesn't sound like anything that I would sign off on, it sounds like it's uh, gonna cause a lot of headaches, people in town generally complaining about fireworks that are not part of a public display during July fourth or those type of things, we get a lot of complaints on that, and, uh, just as Brandon said there, fireworks are not legal to, uh, shoot off or possess them without, without a town permit. And, uh, however, where it's turing is, is not, to me, it sounds like it meets the you know, the category of a, uh, public display and stuff, so my advice is law enforcement for your community would be just the nexus, and unfortunately, it's too bad for none. Would, I don't think it would make sense to approve it. So.
Yeah, so you're saying he won't sign this application?
Uh, from the little bit, I know, it, it sounds like it doesn't meet the, the, um, lay out in statute. And I miss what the Supreme Court decision was, Brandon, what, what did they say in the Supreme Court decision?
Yeah, so the, um, let me pull that up real quick.
Can I just finish my thought? I just, our application, our policy requires sign off from police and fire. And if we have fire, but if the police department is not going to sign the application, then that does give us very clear grounds without getting into the Supreme Court decision on this application or denying.
Okay.
I'm uncomfortable denying it on the grounds of something that none of us had seen before tonight, and certainly this applicant was not aware of.
And I think, but the state statute is very clear that.
State statute does not reference the Supreme Court decision.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But state statute does say that the select board only has the authority to approve supervised public displays.
I did not find that language in thirty-one, thirty-two.
Which, so case law and statute are two different things, but the Supreme Court, so case law is a, a court interpreting the statute, and it's so fair interpretation, uh, which happened after the statute was passed, if they say, uh, it's for public displays, that's the interpretation of the law, and that's how the law ends up being enforced, so even though the statute has some, uh, vagueness there with the Supreme Court making a ruling on it, that's how, that's called case law, and so that's how legally and, um, law enforcement and lands to interpret how that statute is to be enforced.
And I beg forgiveness, under item, uh, B, the state fire marshal may adopt reasonable rules for granting permits for supervised public displays of fireworks. It's not under the part that applies to what we can do, so that's why I pointed that out, but it is there. So anyway, I, I just, I want to be very clear on if I vote to deny this, that it's on grounds that are quite solid and clear that the applicant is not able to comply with our current policy in our application.
Ron?
No, sir. Oh, yes, I. He's a. Fireworks for about thirteen years with North Star fireworks, and most, all the shows that I've done have been display, which are the bigger stuff. Uh, once in a while, North Star does do class, it's called Class C and one point three, which is a display. Um, I took the time because it interested me because of, uh, my association with North Star to try and follow this and see what, um, interpret it, so I contacted, um, Landon Wheeler, who's second command at Fire uh, Safety in, uh, Water. And I asked him about public versus private. And his comment was gonna be pretty much a quote, if it's in front of an audience, it's public. He said, he said, we do not consider any show private. Uh, what he said. Um, I, with that said, I will say that Vermont state law has, has not been changed in a long time. I'm not even sure when the statute that's, uh, in force right now is written, but it, it, it is, and it's lacking. And, uh, there's been some efforts in the past to get it modified so that it was a little cleaner and didn't throw the responsibility on every select board in the state of Vermont to decide yea or nay. And I asked him about responsible operator, this is what he said. In this, once again, I'm talking about the consumer stuff that you can buy in Vermont, there's two stores in Vermont that sell fireworks, or you can buy it across the river. And he said, did they read the directions that came with it? Did they follow? And that's the end of what he said. Uh, there is no certification in Vermont for certified fireworks operator. I don't have a certification in Vermont. It's expired, but I have one in Hampshire, this testing. Should Vermont get a little more strict? They probably should. Are there problems in Vermont with fireworks? Yes, there are, but the problem is when the town doesn't know about them. Um, leaving the, the neighbors' concerns aside, it's a lot easier if you know that the, the fireworks are gonna go on. As far as the public or private, if you take that to an extreme, um, I'm gonna use another example, it was in my house, we put on a fireworks show for my daughter's wedding, you wouldn't have been able to permit because it's not public, you had to be invited. That would, and if that gets taken to an extreme in Vermont, nobody would be able to put on a fireworks show unless they invite the whole community. And it's a good thing, that's a bad, but nonetheless, it isn't what fire prevention has in mind. Keep in mind, they said, and this is a quote, it's not in writing, he just said, if it's in front of an audience, it's public. I would challenge that if I was a grammar expert, which I'm not, but they, they really do need to tighten up the laws and, and figure out so that it doesn't put the onus on you guys. And another thing he said was, it's whatever the select board is comfortable with. And, you know, I looked at the application and it sent back Mac code, um, that in N F P A, part of the law is N F P A eleven ninety-three. And it says seventy feet for every inch of shell, he's got inch and three quarters, so he's gotta be a hundred and twenty-five feet away from, uh, i- his eye, then he's got that. Um, but even the shows that we shoot, we shoot up to six inch, and then you go up three hundred and fifty feet, and, and there's even, um, variances on that, you can angle it, and you can cut it by one third. Um, but anyway, that, that's kind of a secondary thing. But I think the way that fire prevention is interpreting it is, is important, um, but it's your guys' decision to make.
Anybody else over there? I can't see who it is.
Yes, I don't know what happened, Wayne Johnson, I don't know what's the laws have changed over the years, but I do know that when my kids graduated college, I came to the town, it was back a few years when Peter Cole was still the town manager, and Dick, uh, Brown was the chief of police, and I asked if I could get a firework display. What can I do? Could I put on fireworks? Like, what Dick told me is fireworks, other than the sparklers and stuff, are illegal in Vermont, illegal to be sold or purchased in Vermont, he goes, no. If they miraculously somehow appear in your garage, his words, he goes, I don't know anything about it, but he goes, and Peter told me, uh, well, there is no fireworks commission, I don't know when the select board started granting permits, I don't know when that happened. My wife was actually working for the town half of the time, and they did actually have a fireworks commission to get grant permits for licensed operators to put on public fireworks displays. So it's my understanding that all fireworks are still illegal in Vermont, is what John said, there's two places that you can purchase them, I that's news to me, I didn't know, and I'm, you know, uh, but from my understanding, it was always, did I put on a show? Yes, I did. I still put on a show, but as, uh, uh, as Peter Cole and Chief Brown also told me at the time. However, be aware, that he said, if something from your fireworks lands on your neighbor's roof, sets a fire, he goes, you could be setting yourself up for lawsuit. And at the time, the select board was not granting permits because as Peter said also, that could be setting the town up for a lawsuit. If they're granting permits and they don't have a firework commission, the select board, now I don't know when the select board became the firework commission too, but that's all I have to, I mean, but now lawsuits do change, I may be behind times, but.
Kelly, can I speak more about it?
Thank you.
I say anything I would have said before, fireworks aren't illegal, they're illegal to, to, to the zaps, they're illegal to shoot without a permit. So, Wayne. I was on the board when the existing ordinance was, uh, uh, hatched out, and we had all the same discussions that you're having tonight. And all the aspects of it, nothing's changed in state law. I can't speak for fire prevention, they become more lax or less lax, I, I, I don't recall consulting with them. But nonetheless, we, we did take all the things that you're taking into consideration. And we also felt that it was important to have something on the books so that people could legally, if you will, shoot them. And at least the neighbors would know, and this is a good example, that permit didn't come in, he did it anyway, by the time, um, the, the sheriff's department got there, whoever happened to get there, they'd be all done, and it would be their choice whether or not they cited. I think it's much better to have something on the books so that people can come in and at least attempt to do it legally as opposed to just, let's face it, you go around on the Fourth of July, there's stuff flying in the air everywhere, it's gross, so.
Um, so I agree with John, and thank you, John, because I thought of you, I mean, I just didn't bring you up, you know, I figured you'd come along, so. Um, maybe, would it be possible, if we, if we hold off on this until our next meeting, that brings it to the twenty-third and brings us inside the window? I think it requires fifteen days or prior to the event. Can we waive that fifteen days based on our situation, give him another two weeks to give us a rider on the insurance policy and the name of a qualified individual, if that, like you said, even.
There's no definition.
John, you could go fire inform him, in my opinion, and you know more about it than anybody in the room. Um, and, um, I, is that possible?
Yeah. Well, I I mean, it would have to be a published display, not a.
Oh, I think.
But if that definition is correct.
He still needs police to sign off. He's already said he would.
And I would, I would have to sign off on it as well.
I mean, if the select board really wants it, fine, then sign off on it, I guess my, what I meant by that is my advice, it sounds like it doesn't meet the definition, I think some hearsay of, oh, that guy said anybody watching is public. You know, law enforcement, when somebody's private property, the people you invited, I wouldn't consider that a public display. But I'm not trying to, but if you guys really want this person on fireworks display, it's fine, it sounds like it's.
It, it also with, if, if, it also gives the gentleman an opportunity to come before us, as we had requested, he's missed that tonight because of graduation events. You know, just a scheduling thing. Uh, I, I would also, is August where he, um?
No, he said graduation.
Oh, because there was the concern there with the animals.
Yeah.
Which I understand as well, seeing that would also maybe afford him another opportunity to, to weigh in on this. Um, perhaps there's a question. He said he's firing an inch and three quarter, John?
That's good.
You, you said he was firing an inch and three quarter, was his request?
That's what it says on the.
So, you know, but we don't know how many, how long. Um, I, I had some other questions, but, but, but kind of based on the drawing of where he's firing, the direction he's firing, he, he shows a tree line, is that, can it go into a field, or is that over a forest?
He, he didn't put down the fallout zone, um.
That, that, and that's what I'm talking.
It, it, I'm not gonna say there's no fallout from consumer fireworks, but it's pretty minimal.
Oh, okay, well. Again, thank you. Now, I'm wearing more as you go on.
I could ask everybody in the room that has shot fireworks in their life to raise their hand.
I, I get it, I get it, well.
Obviously, over the, over the years, since the application, um, was presented by whenever that was, um, the fire department's standpoint has been meet that, we look at the criteria's of the mapping, what the safety protocol he puts in place, and obviously the conditions of the weather at that point. Uh, obviously on there, it is, um, both fire permits have signed off on it, doesn't matter what side of town it was, also the fire warden. And it does state in the permit, um, that, that, uh, I think it's two days prior to the event, and they have to reach out to the fire warden uh, to, uh, find out what the, uh, fire status is of, um, uh, if, if we're gonna allow it or not allow it, depending on, um, the level of, uh, fire safety or, uh, for, for, uh, for a fire. Uh, but that, that's, that's why both, both fire departments, uh, have been on the depression, obviously what was brought up tonight about the statute change, uh, versus private versus, you know, that was never it's never was brought up prior to this, so. Thank you.
But John made a really good point, though, i- i- if people are there watching it, it's a public display. Um, and I think he clarified private with, with the wedding analogy, which is, you know, those are invites only. And maybe, I still think if you got three hundred people, you invited to a wedding and you were shooting, that's still a public display, you got three hundred people watching it, still an audience.
One of the thing that, that Landon Wheeler said was that they are trying not to add more reg, they don't want to have regulations. He understands that the existing law leaves problems like this, but, but believe it or not, in Vermont, they don't want to overregulate it for ads, add things, they uh, I think they're, they're really, uh, shirping their responsibility. And I'll, I'm gonna pursue that a little bit with Landon, that, um, it's not fair to dump it on every two hundred fifty-two boards in Vermont to make, uh, their own decision. Most of the, I can tell you right now, that, that a lot of towns don't even have a permit system for display fireworks, we did one in Andover, Vermont, and they didn't have a thing. So the office sends out a generic one, the select board still has to sign off on it, but nonetheless, it's a generic permit.
Do we need a motion to continue? Yeah, I make a motion to continue review of this application to our next meeting, whatever they have done.
So twenty-third? Twenty-third?
No, no, we're, we're second, we're second before, right?
Right, two weeks.
We have to have.
Twenty-third, yeah. To, to the twenty-third meeting. With the request that the applicant be present? And, um, additional insurance information.
I think also answer elements of the petition on public display, which I think is the thing that makes our decision that our decision, we can permit.
Yeah. That, that one bothers me less than the, um, um, I'll second the motion instantly. And now we go into discussion. Um, I'm, I'm more concerned with the, you know, somebody, not knowing that somebody knowledgeable is handling the event than the fireworks, that's kind of important.
Yeah.
What does the select board consider a competent operator?
Well, that's John Arison. Well, he might sell fireworks, he might not be competent, but everybody that consults all their appendages. Um.
Hold on, Brian?
Oh, well, I mean, I won't stick with that. I, I mean, maybe get in the first town controversy here, but I mean, the Division of Fire Safety's own packet that they put out on their website, I mean, fireworks are dangerous in particular, blah, blah, blah. Public fireworks display is conducted by trained professionals and supervised by a local fire department, a good old term is. Um, and again, I just think. I think there's a lot of literature out there that's saying it needs to be a public display. And if, when you're saying, well, free your people, but if I wasn't, but if you weren't wanted there, they could kick you out, right? That's not public. If you guys hold the Fourth of July celebration and light off fireworks, that's a public display. I really disagree uh from a legal standpoint that someone would say that just because you have people in your house, it's a public display. Uh, you're on private property, people are there, vegetation only, um, and I think. The idea that there might be not get a definition of a trained professional or competent operator. You know, just a random person saying, oh, yeah, I'm I'm training this. Um, I think you're also opening yourself up. You know. To, everybody's gonna start applying for fireworks permits and then what do you say? No, this doesn't make sense. He also wants to be supervised by a fire department. Let me say, I think. You're going down a road here. Seems, I don't know a lot of the towns approve this.
And and I uh clearly am catching up, but I I do agree with what John said about how it is, right? If people are gonna do fireworks, it's kind of nice to know ahead of time, some of us with animals, it is nice to know, say, having in the barn. Out on a one strand electric fence, uh, you know, uh, it is, I mean, there. And maybe there is an illegal pathway because there isn't a legal. It's not legal, but uh making sure that we're correct on that. Because if there is a pathway to permit, it that is the better pathway, uh, in my opinion, so that the neighbors know, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't, I don't know fireworks going off on the Fourth of July, because, you know, out talking the dogs, but uh, but that's, I think, I have a kid who shoots fireworks lately. Or or started fireworks.
The problem is. State statute not being completely clear. It's all set up that position. Which leaves town council very skeptical. The sheriff, myself. Um. I will, I will obtain this clarity. If I'm going to say it.
Brings the statute, say, it has to be approved within fifteen days.
That was our, that was our own policy.
Well. The state Vermont, their little handout, the fire division fires in fifteen days, it needs to be approved, so I don't know.
I see, okay.
I'm aware of that fifteen days, but if you have a policy. And the Division of Fire Safety has a policy, it might be under the Title twenty, thirty, thirty-one, or in that area. That um. Under permitting in fifteen days. I can't imagine you guys just made that up and Fire Safety made it up all at once. So, I think.
We could hold a special meeting if you guys want to leave that requirement.
You can. Policy reference, I I could have missed it when I read it, but is there a reference on application date or a group date? The other, that would put the other application in jeopardy as well, because it's not one that gets found out.
And and we've kicked the can twice now, down here tonight.
Yeah.
You know, it's not the applicant's error that he's laid on the application. That's why I mentioned possibly waiving that. Um. Because he certainly meant that. It's us that's pulling that up. And the fire departments are aware, you know. Neighbors are aware.
Says, applications for permits shall be made to the town manager in writing at least twenty-one days in advance, the date of.
And he's more than met that. Because it was at our last meeting, fourteen days ago.
Have one last thing, and then I'll shut up. I did check on on this.
You heard him, Matt.
Hard to believe. But what triggered it was that people were showing up, especially in the rotten area, with a U-Haul, pulling fireworks, and putting them beside their own and selling them. And that wasn't a great setup because they didn't have proper ATF, um, proper credentials or, um, and and that really is what triggered. It does, I'm not disputing what it says, because it does talk about the displays. But it's, that was what triggered that spring point case, was the sale of fireworks, and that pretty much has been snuffed out. Um, the only place right now that I'm aware of, you can buy them, are in Eastmont, Philly or in. In the interest.
So a motion to carry this to the next meeting? Everyone in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. The extension, motion carries next meeting.
Good.
First, for the agenda. Okay, the town manager is four. And then to fire in firm.
I'm gonna stand up there. The town clerk did, I got.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize our significant milestone for the town of Wethersfield. As part of our continued efforts, the fire department committee and I worked collaboratively, collectively to create the new position of municipal fire chief. After a thorough and thoughtful selection process, the committee unanimously recommended Josh Pompo for that role. In accordance with that recommendation, I officially appointed Mr. Pompo as Wethersfield's first municipal fire chief. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the town clerk, Floanne, who will administer the oath of office to keep going. Did they encourage you? Um, I have the undersound, undersigned town manager of the town of Wethersfield, Vermont. Under the authority given to me by law, due hereby. By these presence constitute and appoint you fire chief in and for the town of Wethersfield. With all the powers and duties appertaining to said office pursuant to the laws of Vermont. Said appointment shall remain in force unless sooner revoked for cause. This new appointment supersedes prior appointments. Given over my hand, uh, the town of Wethersfield and said county of Windsor. This ninth day of June, two thousand and twenty-five. I, Josh Pompo. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of fire chief in and for the town of Wethersfield. During my continuance of office and therein do equal right and justice for all men and women, to the best of my judgment and ability. I'm following with this badge. That's the one, Wethersfield, the municipal fire chief.
Maybe somebody practiced.
There's a new fire chief that's giving a speech.
Thank you all. I have a couple more things to marry for. Any questions about? About the appointment of the municipal fire chief?
Isn't this an open-ended thing? It's on the term that it's been for so many years or something like that?
Um, it'll remain in full force and effect unless there's a vote for a just cause.
Okay, that's what, that's my understanding, okay.
Um, I'd like to pass it over to Sheriff Palmer to give an update on police, and I'll follow that to a couple of updates on the department of sale.
Well, well, so, uh, besides fireworks, um, we took over June one and basically midnight. Um, we think by the next day, we get called out. Everything seems to be going pretty smooth. Josh, you know, just left. Um, I think this is a huge step forward, public safety-wise, for town Wethersfield. And that was clearly the uh right choice because in the last month or so that I've been interacting with him, uh, it's been fantastic. He's welcoming, we've been working together, uh, fantastic. I don't know if you're following us on social media or whatever, we've had a couple arrests already, impaired driver crashing into a vehicle, um. On one thirty-one, who falls, uh, four acts of crack cocaine off of him. Arrested him a bunch of charges there. Uh, the next night, we arrested a driver who was about two and a half times the legal limit uh for DUI. Uh, so we're continuing a little late. What's Wethersfield been called out to? Um, and the car took off just before we got there. Again, one thirty-one, so it's maybe see, uh, I think that you seen, hopefully, uh, we're in the whole presence. We're we're covering until late into the night. And, um, we're at the school the other day, um. Deputy Mike Keith and I stopped at the school, went to the school, talked about emergency planning. Uh, handed out about four thousand stickers. I don't know how a couple hundred kids ended up with four thousand stickers, but uh. And so that's been very good. Be at field day Wednesday and hopefully make comparisons myself, so. Uh, we'll build those relationships and everything seems to be clicking very well. Uh, Doc and. Had a couple of other guys, Colby came out the other night to help us through this accident scene, um, with the impaired driver with drugs. It's just been, it's been very, very smooth so far. Any questions?
I'm staying. We have to step up to the podium and say who you are, please. I'm Jordan McGowan of Spalding, and I just wanted to thank you guys for making that decision as well as having me right here. We've actually had to deal with them uh three times, actually right outside of our house. Um, already, which is kind of annoying, uh, but it's been nice to have them almost immediately. And one of the other times was also right outside our house, but we were away. Um, and I don't know if I should publicly say this, but it was nice to know as well that my house was being watched, um, because I have huge concerns about the people that are around us, so. All of them have been wonderful at fire calls. Um, I can't speak highly enough of that, so I just want to thank you very much.
I think that kind of annoyed because I was there, I'm not sure what she meant. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That that tracks, right?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so any other thoughts, feelings, concerns, direction?
So for the past several weeks, I mean, initially, upon you taking over that following Monday. We transferred all um police equipment over in the sheriff's office just to have it in holding in a safe place. Um, the accountant and I went over there uh with Sheriff Palmer and a couple of other deputies. And we took an inventory of all the equipment, serial numbers, models, and we developed a list, um. All pictures were taken of all equipment and the accountant is currently working on value. Um. So we think within. Twenty to thirty more days we'll have. We'll have everything drafted for the select board to review. Our next update is a solid waste update. Um.
Yeah, Sheriff Palmer, yeah, thank you, sir.
On the last meeting, I I had mentioned that, uh, I'll let everybody.
So I'm trying to plug here.
On the last meeting, I mentioned I've given up the solid waste contract, um. I am still currently working through that with the Windsor County Solid Waste Management, the not waste, nothing's been signed at this point. Open, I'm gonna bring it up in the next week or so. Website, I have a meeting Wednesday or Thursday, still waiting. They're scheduled exactly at a time, but it will be this week. Um, we can talk to our administrative assistant about taking on website responsibilities, including the training to get up to speed. Um. We're also gonna talk about whether we want to contract out. Um, one of the companies stepped in on the project. I did reach out to them and they did say they were still interested on getting the website up to par. And then adding our county office, our administrative assistant, and like only four. So we're gonna, I hope that it flushed out before the next meeting, um. The last thing is rosters and mission statements. That's one thing that I haven't fully got to yet. I hope to have all those completed by the next meeting, sorry for the delay. Any questions from here?
Carl, I just have one quick question, and I didn't notice and I didn't want, my apologies. Is the new number to get ahold of the new police department been changed on the website?
Yeah, it's not. Thanks for bringing that up, Carl.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Please, I haven't done it. Suzanne May.
Next thing on the agenda, warrant to impound unlicensed, like, unlicensed dogs. This is Floin. You doing it or just blowing in?
Not blowing in.
Okay. Well, there you go, Floin. Get up to the podium and explain to us why you want this done. Everyone, get up there. Wow.
Since then, we used to affectionately call it the Kilt Fluffy. Letter, because it's really severely worded.
And that's, that's in statute, that's not ours. But every year, um, at this time in June, I have to handle a list of delinquent dogs over to the select board. And then it's their job to go out and get the unlicensed dogs. Put somebody in charge of it, that hasn't happened in many, many years, and we are so down on registration. And one of them, oh, well, one of them's holding the case. It's because it's stacked up because you just have to, or it's a health issue, because we don't know whether the dogs have had. Rabies, and you know, vaccine the letter, and if they bite somebody, it's a very costly thing for somebody to go through. So. I'm making a plea, and I do a lot, to please try to figure this situation out. We did have somebody years ago, we did a bank, and we have nearly seven hundred registered. Now I don't even have three. So each year it keeps going down. And I gave you how the paper there, tried to reinforce how important this is. And then they just, they statured, and um. We sent him a card, a little postcard in January, telling him that they have to register their dog until they have a playbook. And then in the middle of April, we sent another reminder, to tell them to do it by May third, because then it's acting out that I have to join with you soon. And I have a sign out, Ron. Um. Little Fred fell over, I don't know, with the rain, but, um. That's. That's it in a nutshell. It's law and that, what's, it's true what we done. There are people who have a warrant and have a lawsuit. How how do, how do we enforce this? How how do we leave?
Well, it starts by following the state law, designate one or more persons to maintain a list.
We have lists, we have the list. Has a list, they have. Well, you know, basically, not necessarily, but I mean, um, approach to be both, send a letter, you know. Um, one of the clerks. Said that how they handle it is based on how. I know it's, and said that if they weren't registered by sections of the town, it was one of the hundred dollar fine. We tried to immediately go on the twenty-five dollar fine. That's enough. So I'm in trouble, I don't know what that's gonna do. And also the state raised it this year, um, they're part of it. Two, two dollars helps pay for the um rabies or spay them. And um, it's it's hard to just get a money to pay ten dollars instead of my five dollars for license. So, and that's on a new deal. So and that's on a new deal.
So who's who's maintaining this list?
I do.
Were you designated? Who who is maintaining the list of unregistered dogs?
Yes, my offices.
Did the select board designate somebody in your office to do that?
No, we do it by statute.
That is the statute flowing.
Yes, but now it's turned over to the select board. You read those.
I just did. I I have it right in front of me. The legislative body shall annually designate one or more persons to maintain a list. Who has been designated by this board to maintain that list?
I give you the list that you have there and then
You're not answering the question. The question is who did this board designate to do that?
We haven't done it yet.
Thank you. So we have not followed the statute flowing.
No, you haven't in years.
That's why I'm asking you, who is maintaining the list? Maintenance of the list, what would that be? That would be knocking on people's doors if you think have a dog that's not registered and verify they have a dog, write their name down, and they're now on the list by the designated person from this board. That would be the statute to start with, following the law, right? You're following the law with fireworks and other things. We're following the law. Which I'm okay with. But that's the first thing that hasn't happened. So my question is, the list you claim to have, you claim it's been maintained. How has it been maintained and by who?
I'm talking about my delinquent list that I turned over to you by statute. It's gonna be another list. I do not know. You'll have to come up with your own list if you go knocking on doors and you know. But I don't, I think a lot
The question is about the list that you have. How did it? How did you determine that?
Because people that have registered last year, you're not registered this year. That's how they get on the list.
Okay. All right, well, that's an answer.
That brings up the question, and if somebody has a dog and it's registered and it dies, deceased. Uh should we be telling the the town clerk? So because my dog passed away last year and uh so that's why I have a version this year. Uh everybody from here to my house knew my dog because she could get out of anything and she knows who could have her. So every house from Thrash Road to here was her home. They they had to be adopted there. Uh so, but I didn't answer this year, but you know. The people didn't know that, I mean, we actually had a party for all all the neighbors from here up to my house to come up to, that everybody knew better, so.
And there are a few dogs that have that have deceased. But we don't know that unless somebody calls and tells. And it's any time report, you have reports saying please do that. We get reports all the time of dogs to bother people and they ask you to get registered and they're not.
So so through that process, you update the list accordingly as best you can, yes?
Not if the dog wasn't licensed before. I cannot do that.
That would bring it back to this person that's responsible for it.
Will you come up with a person? I'm just saying here, I don't have anyone.
I'm just saying that we have, we have to follow the law. We're going to follow the law, right?
Well, what I heard you say is years ago you had a system that worked well, right? Can you tell us what that system was that was working?
Um the person sends a letter um with statute, and I've done that too. And I got very good with the policy, what the statute says. And I tell them that's how it works, but anyway, um this person got the prior list.
Who who was the person at that? I mean, I don't care what their name is, but what was their role?
That's what they were hired for.
Just to do.
They probably did it wrong. And um they uh put the prior list and once they were not registered on the prior list and letters were sent out and I mean, there are fines, you have to, this sheriff, the police, police can't remove. Animal control officer. We have an animal patrol officer, officer, but I don't think she has many hours here. She works out in in New Hampshire. And um we did get a lot. We got more dogs registered that time than I had ever seen in here. Then they twin dog each year.
So did the select board authorize hiring this person to do this years ago?
Yeah.
Who hired the person to do that?
The town manager, the town manager. I I can't say that that they were hired. I'm not sure. Would have been involved here.
Was the person an animal patrol officer?
No.
Okay. What was the person's title?
She was, I don't really know what the title was.
Where a dog?
What happened to the position?
Raise state something. Can't see out of the corner of my eye when you're sitting over there, you know.
I believe at the time Lynn was constable back when we had a constable.
Um yes, excuse me, Lynn wasn't telling you us plus, that's how. Because we don't have, we haven't.
I I can give you a little bit of history um on how it evolved um. At different times, we had people that were a little a little low as Alice in their in their position. And it was causing the amount of strife in town. We didn't feel she doing a good job. And now we don't have a constable at all. And when the we uh went with the gal older in uh Clermont. Yeah, it's been really a bit just to, I mean, she is done, as far as I'm concerned. Don't do something to annoy her so she doesn't want to come over here because it's really important. But that's a little bit separate from the registration.
You mean, you you're referring to Cameron Horace?
That's not the same as the constable. No.
Uh next question or point, Nathan, as we
I just wanted to get out of luck with that. I didn't want to bring the point to me. So I I I mean, I think what would happen with Brandon's is what you would suggest is a solution at the next meeting on on how to address making sure we're following the law would be. But in a reasonable way that doesn't make the entire town angry, right? Sounds like the history.
Thank you. Thank you for Mason. He's shaking his head. Okay, next item on the agenda, legal trail six discussion.
Yeah, uh Mr. Tar is here. Mr. Tar, are you there?
Yes, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes.
This is Joe and this is Cici, my wife. Brandon, should we just kind of walk through what we're looking to propose?
Yeah, and uh I have your PowerPoint up on the other TV in the room.
Okay.
I'm currently on the first slide. Can you see it?
Um I cannot see it. I'm following on the, I I have it up on my side though, so I can kind of follow and direct you when we go to the next slide.
So right now we're on the covered page and I'm gonna move to the second page. Where it says utilizing legal trail six, what, where, why, when?
Great. So hello, everyone. Um my name's Joe. Cici. We're originally from the area. We currently reside in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, but are looking to start making strides of coming back to this, to that area, to the Weathersfield area. And one of the options we're looking to pursue at this point is possibly build a house um on John and Patty Arison's property. Um and we're working through the details of that now. Um so what we're coming to the select board today to ask for guidance and your approval for is utilizing the legal trail six as a partial driveway. There's about two hundred and fifty feet um of legal trail six that we'd like to up upgrade a little bit. And utilize that piece to reach a potential driveway site at some point. Um right now, we're looking just to get approval on using and making the updates necessary for that legal trail six. And like I said, for a future home build, and we'd like to start making improvements from like a timeline perspective to that um sometime this summer. Um I put some photos here from like a driveway location perspective, if Brandon wanted to scroll down further. Of how it would like flow. Um so one, two, they go in subsequent order here. Um where the signage first starts, where it says no motorized vehicles. And kind of how the plow trucks, you know, managed to way up to there today. Um we go further up and then you can see how it's like about two, I think it's two fifty to three hundred feet is what we're looking to utilize. Once it's all said and done. And if you scroll down further, there's an aerial view. As well as the actual snippet from the mapping designating that it's legal trail six.
John, this is an extension of your, like, your I mean.
Well, excuse me, what's your wife?
No. Mike was asking a question.
Um this is, this is an extension basically past your house, correct?
Correct.
Is that a private driveway to your house or is it trail six today?
It's three to right about well, the X. It's class three right there.
Oh, it is currently, yeah.
And that's approximate, yeah.
And and a little bit of history, we moved in up on the hill in two thousand and one. And um the, at that time, the entire length of it was class four. And people were going on it on skyline and it's really muddy, really steep. We had people trying to drive over it. Um um and it really shouldn't have been open for vehicles at that time. And that's mostly the end towards skyline. It's eroded, it's muddy. Um some guy came up doing an early Davidson and 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 we own both sides. We own both sides of Center Grove Road all the way from where it begins at the um the old, all the way to the skyline. So there's no other rebutters that
I I remember that. I do, I do, I remember that. Um you know, um my question uh basically on this comes down to um be because that's a designated trail, th- there's certain restrictions on that uh that are uh in statute.
Correct.
Um wouldn't we have to do like, Brandon, let that sit there where it was and be fine?
Sorry, I was
I appreciate it. You're okay. Uh but would wouldn't it, wouldn't we be, um would it be more appropriate to to take that back to a class three?
Class four, please.
At least a class four.
At least four.
A class four, we don't maintain, that would
But we can allow them to use it.
Exactly. Um uh is there
A bunch of track.
Is there, the, does the, if that's a class three up to your house, the town takes care of it that far?
Correct.
Do they, they have appropriate, they have a good turnaround there, I guess?
Is that as appropriate as a lot of others in town, which is not exactly appropriate?
Like a hammerhead?
It could be better. And part of the plan is make it better. Uh we we took the time to to uh look up state statutes and reviewed it with town statute. And state statute, the only differentiation between trail and class four is the maintenance of bridge and culverts. And that's the only thing that's different in state statute between a four and a trail. There's nothing in there about truck vehicles that we found. This research I did.
Well, John's correct. A trail can be used motorized vehicle. This one was posted for no motorized vehicles because it was in good condition and people were driving on it and ruining it. The four decided posted, um I believe from the homeowner, um requesting it also. So the town did that. That's not state law. Um if these folks wish for us to file all the way to their new driveway going to your house, another three hundred feet. Then we have made a class three road. They would be responsible for bringing it up to that standard, doing that whole thing. Um if we make it a class four, I would be responsible for culverts and any kind of washout or anything. You don't want the expense to keep their trail. You don't have to go through any of that stuff to do to change anything. You would have to have free hearings. We'd have to have public relations and all that. You can keep it a trail, give the permission to them to work on it and do it, sign a contract. Brandon and I have already had discussions and I I came up with a little draft that we looked at. Um not to get too much into the weeds, but things to protect the town and the trail would be they couldn't post it, that nobody's come in. Um people are gonna drive that actually three hundred feet and they're gonna have to place a park, what I would assume. They're gonna know people are gonna be able to drive up three hundred feet and we can't keep them out of there. And then allow them to use it as a private driveway, because it is public access. So that's all, that's on the homeowner. We've already had that discussion. Um I just don't want it to end up in a situation where somebody buys the house. And it's not written really well with an agreement that they don't know the history. They know that this is in public access and it is a trail from wherever they built their driveway. It's still gonna be a trail out the skyline. And they have to be able to let people park on the driveline.
What, now the planning commission to case in, what's the potential for future development beyond this?
That would be directly into a subdivision and you'd have to go through that whole process.
Yeah.
And I can do the same thing. If you have, I'm subdivided and they wanted to add on to it, then they'd have to follow the subdivision rules, make the road bigger and wider and whatever else they had to do to make that more accessible, but it could still be considered a trail in our eyes and not have to go through the process of making it a four or a three.
And and then there'd still be a planner, the um tribally access to what we, you know, what we tend to look at this as being. Um what's, what are, what are the homeowners that are on the, on the road, woman?
This would not be a driveway access. This is them getting permission to drive on the trail.
I understand.
Then not come back and do a driveway.
I understand that, but I I'm just trying to understand what people that live there want to do.
I met with a local contractor to try to get some idea of what we do. A, from here to here is is pretty flat. Um it's not muddy. Uh so we don't think that a base is gonna be an issue, but nonetheless, it's shows old wheel ruts where the water has gone down through. One problem over the years was that uh it, because this, this has, does slope this way. And water would find its way and it was washing out the town road, or or excuse me, the class three road. So a water bar was put in right where the X turn a little bit back actually. And we got to figure out how to do that. And the local contractors said, well, some kind of color or something to get the water turned there so people going down and and washing out the town part of the road. Uh which i- it seemed to be working, that hasn't washed out significantly for a long time. Uh so it is, it is helping quite a bit. It does tend to sheet off the hill a little bit and we try to keep it turned so it doesn't go onto the town road. Um a a little bit of history that in in research, thank you, and she already left. Uh trying to figure out, Patty and I remember coming before the board to limit traffic on the road. We moved up there in two thousand and one. We couldn't find anything in the minutes. Um the minutes from, and and interestingly, the the mileage report that you guys sign every year in two thousand and fourteen said it was a class four and then in fifteen it said that it's a trail. So I'm gonna assume that had something to do with the ancient road people, uh picking up some old paperwork. I don't have any other explanation, but then there was a footnote that said, wouldn't say two thousand and twelve per something from two thousand and twelve. The two thousand and twelve minutes aren't involved. We don't, so we couldn't go back and research that. We couldn't find them. I don't know where they are or if they are. So so we couldn't find a history. So, so we couldn't find a history. Was it just town highway being nice and putting the signs up? Honestly, don't know.
So, so, so as a trail, if I can continue, as, as a trail. What type of traffic do you see up there, Joe? Where are they going? What do they do? You know, that kind of thing.
Down at the skyline end, there's a significant structure to keep people from coming up through there. That's what was a pent road. And not even a trail. Because technically, somebody, if you can drive this, then you should be able to drive back too. So in a way it's a pet road, but is it just a totally, we got a lot of them, a lot of fours you cannot drive. Unless you have a tank.
But, but are, but are there people walking, hiking out through there?
All of them.
So, I, I think. Okay, so.
Of course, we invite people, we invite people on our property, not on the town.
That's, that's great. What, what I'm trying to get at is if you're going to extend that up through for this next house. And I think you said something about putting in a parking area there is, does it make more sense? I mean, we, we can do what we need to do to let it go and we can go through the process to take it to a three. Get the turnaround that we need for the town. Does that make everybody happy? Get, get, get a parking area up there for the hikers and the people who are using the, they're letting use it. I don't know which, what you guys were.
The only people that we've had that wanted to park, they were hunters. And they traditionally park down here and walk up. As a matter of fact, do you mind a funny story? It was a, a night that there was supposed to be a significant shooting stars. I mean, at like four in the morning, we actually got out of bed and we're standing out here. And we saw the guy park pitch dark, like four in the morning and he's tiptoeing up through here. And we hollered at him. He almost. What are you guys doing out here at four in the morning? He had no idea.
We're hunting, just like you are.
I don't call anybody that, we, we, GPS used to say this was a way to get the old ball road. We haven't had that for a long time either. People come up, it, somebody came up, turned around today, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, people just explore. And, and we don't have a problem with that. They don't smash you in one of our cars. The, the town right now comes up and they back in right about where my pickup truck is. Not perfect. We moved some stone walls back to make it a little bit easier. If we can improve that a little bit more, that was the goal, was maybe to improve it a little bit more. Because even if it turns into a class four, somewhere here, it's got to be, the town's got to turn around.
And a culvert, because you got. Mr. Char, where, where are you at and what you want in there?
Yeah, I mean. I would, I think aesthetically speaking, there's some big beautiful maples that are close to that rock wall there. So if we can narrow how much we actually have to go wide with the road. So I think the, the like the legal trail ask thought process. Permits us to be able to keep it relatively narrow still and not have to get rid of those big maples that have been there for, you know, decades and decades and decades. So we'd like to do that if we could, right? We don't want to upgrade the road so much so. Where we lose all those trees that have been there for, you know, probably a hundred plus years, right? So. That's our initial thought of it. But everything John's speaking about, I mean, we're in complete agreement with.
Have, have you? Is, is this property already subdivided? Is the lot he's on, is it already a subdivided lot?
Can you back up to one of the words lines?
It's divided by the road.
The, the separate? In yellow is actually a separate lot. It doesn't need to be subdivided.
Okay, and now, and that's what he's.
It gets a little tricky.
Well, so are you dedicating that whole lot as their, their building? So technically, they have frontage.
We love our daughter and son in law, because if we deed them this lot. They get our burn. You don't get to use it, but you're going to own it.
They have frontage on a class three town highway, so that makes it a legal building.
Right.
You're just asking to use the trail as a driveway to access this new house.
Yes. And because it's open, somebody, anybody else could drive it. You can't, if it's open traffic, it's open to traffic. And, and I, Joe, didn't we talk about making some kind of little hammerhead there? So that if somebody inadvertently comes up to there, they are driving all the way up the house.
Would it be except fire and police and emergency vehicles?
That hasn't been discussed. That would be discussed with the new fire chief to make sure that the radiuses are okay.
So there's no call to, just because you want to make it a driveway, doesn't mean you have to widen it. It's already a fifty foot wide right away as long as it's.
That's correct.
Wide enough to get vehicles through this. There shouldn't be any need to widen it.
And even think about taking it to a class three, two things. It would look like the dickens because you'd cut all maple trees down and it wouldn't match this half. It doesn't meet class three standards either.
I'm, I'm okay with it. Now, the agreement that was proposed by the attorney. It's only for your daughter and sons. Is that correct? It's not transferable at that house. If they decide not to build the house or they. Circumstances change, they build a house and they have to leave and go somewhere else. Do all, this, this agreement would apply to current and future owners of this property?
That's a good question. I don't have a definitive answer.
Yeah, I think that would make sense, yeah.
Someday we'll be dead and gone. And hopefully in time soon.
Yeah.
But at that time, they may decide that it makes more sense to try to come up with a tank or lot. Because we own beyond, there, there's actually three parcels there. And we own a significant chunk beyond to the southeast of our, not south to south. Of, of the lot that was outlined in yellow.
How big is this lot?
Joe, what's in twenty?
Yeah, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I believe it was about twenty acres, just a little longer.
It was pinned and, and on G I S, you can, you, it'll actually tell you what it is, but I don't recall. It's more than ten.
What's the zoning industry? So you have a legal building lot, you've got frontage on two. Class three town highways, so you don't have to worry about that. So you just fit for a driveway.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any other reason why you can't create a driveway off the class three? Is this a money saving thing or?
Joe?
Yeah, it's, I mean, some of that is under consideration for sure, but also just when. Any type of future subdivision might happen or subdividing it out, I think it makes more sense for it to follow that line. Up, as we reviewed it with John, we felt like that was the best practice.
So this is opening the door to future development by allowing this driveway on a trail. Well, we, we've been talking to Upper Valley, we've, we don't intend for it to lead to more, to more development. We've been talking to. Yeah, but the people of the Upper Mountain Land Trust. Taking away more of our development.
Incidentally, there's another thing, if you subdivide it creates, well, actually, we've still got a hurdle to go through with Upper Mountain Land Trust. Because even if we sell the C C and Joe, we have to get permission from them. Because they have a. They have easements on, from about here to another stone wall here in conservation. So everything like right here, the conservation, there, where they're proposing the house. You can see a clearing right here. That's not, it's just the side of it is where the conservation, the stone wall that comes from this pin here. It basically goes straight to another stone wall. And then there's a swath of, it's a conservation that goes all the way over to Golden Bridge.
But this development site is outside of the conservation, yes.
But we still get over the hurdle of. Permission to, to sell that lot. Or, and this isn't a real good option, we own it and they build on it. And, and that's not a real good option. That's going to create a major hurdle at some point, but we, we. Actually, I didn't hear back from them. Because we did, we actually got them out there and we walked the entire perimeter of the conserved land. Because their, their wordage reference, the cellar hole that doesn't exist. It references, it says it's twenty five feet off the old cellar hole. And the only thing we think of is there used to be an addition on the burn and I put a stake up. That lines up perfectly with this stone wall to the next stone wall.
And this is the land that protects the.
How do you know it's not a hole on the skyline?
No, no. They didn't know either. So is that, is there supposed to, I think, didn't they say they were trying to clean that up?
Yes.
Because it also references a stone wall up here and the stone wall isn't there. It's down here. And, and they weren't in agreement that's where it is.
I love the, the land lesson, but the real question is around the upgrading and maintenance of the road, right? Because the rest, I go through permitting and, and, and do all that as far as whether you can do whatever or not. So what I wonder is, because I think it's important to be consistent. Is what's the process if it's a class four to give people the ability to, right, maintain or, or, or. Improve that road and what's been the process for a trail in the past for maintaining? Because we're not, right, dictating whether you intend to subdivide or not, whatever. Like that, that, that'll be up to you at some point as landowners, but we're, while we're doing, all the requests I see is. Can we, can we upgrade that to use it to access? Whether it's the field or a home, right? It doesn't matter if they build, to me, the request doesn't, doesn't matter if they build the house or not. They're just asking for being upgraded to. Maybe potentially build it, which gives us context, but it could be to be doing a lot of work in that, the field, right? Or on the, in the wood lot. So that, so I just, we need to see a consistent process for whether it's class four or a trail. Or when, when we consider it allowable or not allowable. And to make sure that it's right and it's clear whenever that happens. Whether it's this trail or a different trail, that it's clear who's maintaining what. And so if somebody drives a monster truck down there and wrecks it, was the right, because I'm. Much as I like your momentum, let's use the roads. That, I mean, so we're just clear about that and that just, there's a decision-making process. I'm guessing you've decided, the board has decided stuff like this in the past on class four roads. And it seems like if there is a. Process in place for class four roads and it seems similar to a, to a trail, then that's the process we should use to make the decision.
If, if the board is more comfortable with it going to a four, the hoop turn. After our goal, but nonetheless, it's not a whole lot different than the road that you abandoned off of Cook Spawne Road. You know, you got to pump and frame later, you got to do this, you got to do that, and go from a trail to a four. And, and then when it's all that said and done, we'll commit an absolute improvement class four and the end result is exactly the same.
I just, I just think we need a consistent process that we follow.
We, we have one. And, and right now it's in the hands of the D R B is where that would be. John's saying, is this, this is sort of. A breakdown from the previous submission to the planning commission for subdivision?
That appears that on the back burner and this is a resurrection of it.
That, that's what I was wondering. Now. If I recall from that, isn't the property. As, as we're looking at this, your, your side where your house is and, and that, that lower lot. Isn't that three to five on that side of the road?
I think we found that shaded as ten, but I couldn't be wrong regardless.
I, I thought it was three to five on that side of the.
You made it right. You made it right.
Ten, it's ten, it's ten on the other side. And you were, the way you were trying to break it up. Had to do with the conservation stuff that you didn't want to affect that. So you had moved and shifted. And you were actually crossing the road and you would have been creating, I had three in the lot on the right hand side of the road. That would have been in C ten, which would have been non-conforming in the C ten area. So, but, but, but if you're, if you're, if you're going to stay on that side of that road, it's three to five. And unless this is actually an accessory dwelling. Then it probably should be going through planning, not planning, but D R B now, because they handle subdivisions. They, I understand that. But, but it would, if, if it's going to be an accessory dwelling, you're putting a second building on.
No, this isn't, this isn't a residence on the lot. The residence is on the other side of the road.
Correct.
On Patty's house on the other side, what you're looking at is a barn.
That's, that says house.
That's the proposed house, but this building here is a barn.
Okay. John's house is on the other side.
Turned to the T.
Okay. So that's.
It would be the only residents on this lot. There's no subdivision.
That's a good memory because I had forgotten that. They talked about going across the road to come up with the right. Recordage.
Yeah.
And then you get into kind of a sticky wicket.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I recall happening there. I'm not, not trying to stop this. I'm just trying to find the easiest in the right avenue. Like I said, you. They're right in consistency in the process.
Yeah, I saw Ray with his hand up. Mike took a pause there. I was waiting to see if he was going to continue.
No, it's okay.
So I, I did do a bunch of research on this to find out the best ways for the town and the residents. You can keep it a trail. And they can get permission to work on a trail, just like those who get permission to work on a class four road. That would, the same process would be put along if they want to do something down there or any other legal trail we have in town. It would be a discussion in the same process. If we make it a class four, we're going to have legal expenses. We're going to have a lot of time and energy put into laying it out and coming to hearings. I know it's. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is a lot of work and it is an extra expense to the town. We can achieve the same goals by keeping this a trail and keep it easy for these folks. If there's ever desire to. Thirty years down the road, subdivision, this won't be here anyway. Hopefully I'll be retired by then. But it'll go through the process of zoning and everything else, all the regulations. If they want to make it a class three road, then they would have to bring it up the specs and then down. Could, could or could not take off. So this is. The best way I could come up with to define, to describe it to Brandon and, and John and these folks on how to do it. And bold books and make it reasonable to everyone. So we are following that. And we proceeded to do the possible.
We did meet with the town attorney on this because the proposal was to use legal trail six. It wasn't to change it to a class four road or a class three road. So what we, we recommended here is in this paragraph here, came from the town attorney. These would be our proposed next steps, one, two, four.
And the thing is to protect. Protect the town and the residents that are having a house there and make sure we understand and it's clearly written and defined. That this is a public road, no private signs. They can post their driveways and keep out, but people are going to be able to. Drive up this road if they accidentally drive up it and you're not going to chase them off pitchforks or whatever, you know, that, that's what I'm trying to protect us from. And it would be, you know, irrationally disgusting to fire. You know, fire apparatus, if you're going to have to turn around, there's a fire truck parked here and another truck can go in like fire, you know, it's, it's all kind of.
And, and, and one other thing, there is precedence of a trail being improved. And I'm not very far from where we live. If you go out, Yule Lane and where it turns into a trail. Has been significantly improved. It was done primarily for logging trucks, but nonetheless, it was significantly improved. Not with that one, with the four, but maybe it did, maybe it didn't, but I don't think it did. And, and, but I'm going to. That, and I hope that this triggers a review of the policy. So that it's more definitive answer on what you can and cannot do on a trail. Can you gate it? When it more or less becomes a prepared road or you have to leave it open to put up signage, no vehicle, I don't know. But you may want to look at that. There are other trails in town that probably need to be addressed. So this discussion is, is easier to have.
Kelly, there, there is another piece. I do recall the ancient roads. Can play the issue with those, those roads came up or those conversions to trails or whatever. At that time. A, a trail did say that no motorized. So we do need to find that and make sure that that changed. And, and the other thing is in, in this proposed. Next steps, the four next steps. Would, would it be appropriate to, to include the Arisans in some of that? I know we're talking about changing the trail, but. The road and the trail are kind of. The road and the trail are kind of one and and if you're talking about changes that are needed, they've mentioned a few and what's going on, should they be listed in there? Just to make sure that everybody that's up there is on the same page. And as far as you, some of you guys.
I don't have a problem meeting with the Tars and the Arisans to review um.
I I I just, you know, if we're gonna move in that direction, just. I'm just suggesting maybe that your names are in the these.
Or stuff, I know what you're saying, right, we are still the owner of that lot.
Yeah.
And um that may have gotten that part back, they helped her handle that. We have to discuss what happened if you guys get divorced. Just being that, and the last thing happened.
Yeah.
And we said if somebody else owned the barn across the road.
You start charging rent.
He's feeling fluffy and now well, now he's divorcing.
I mean, he says that, but I think it is important, right? Might not be owned by the same family, they will, and that's the way it has to be considered.
Yeah.
Uh that's what brought me back to the uh the D R B and the planning commission, which gave up the subdivisions. Because you do have property on both sides of the roads here, but I do, I do recall this this lower section is uh three to five, pretty sure the. That would be the south side of the. Class three, where your barn is, right?
Yeah.
That's that's the south side.
Yeah.
Right, I'm I'm pretty, I'm 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 positive that side is three to five.
You're right.
And 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 pretty, but from that, from that subdivision, it's been a year or two ago, I think it was. And the other the other side is ten, so I think they're got, that that law is over ten acres, twenty acres, I think you said. Easily subdivide three acres out there and then separate the barn from those if you wanted to do that.
I'm just, but I don't think any of that matters.
In this discussion, it doesn't, in the future, it may, there's, I'm just pointing out that it's. The ability to do that, you don't have to do ten acres on that over there for that hour.
And there may be a way to configure it so you don't have to do a round of antitrust, no, we still own that land.
Right.
And and they wouldn't, we don't have front yard, but.
All I mean is, we just have to be consistent around anytime anybody asks him for a train. Or change it from foot traffic only to motorized. We just have to have it, that that's where we have to be consistent, whether it's this situation or. Right, any trail that's designated a trail, you just be consistent on. The process to change it to a motorized or improvements, I'm all about improving the trails, cause I think they're a great asset to the town. Uh and and I think it's done well by other communities who were. Using their class four roads and their their trails.
Brandon, you, did you craft a motion for this?
Uh to approve the request subject conditions to be outlined in a formal agreement. And it's proposed next steps, so the select board, if it feels comfortable, would approve the request. Subject to conditions that the county attorney always should break them and I will create uh for the next week.
Okay, so you don't need a motion to like. Or you do?
I don't, I don't, I'm not ready to make.
That's where I was trying to get is, you know, I I wanted John's, I wanted John in your.
So you guys want us to negotiate an agreement prior to a motion?
Yeah, I I think personally, just there seemed to be a lot of uncertainties, number one. It's a precedent to allow residential development off of a trail. And I'm not sure what kind of Pandora's box that might open. I'm I'm more comfortable with, I know we have given permission, when I say we, I mean this board has given permission. For people to. Develop residential properties off of class four town highways, that's we've done before and I'm I'm I'm. More comfortable with that than I am. This seems like a house of cards to me a little bit, it's a very specific situation. Um the future, I I wanna make an agreement that is gonna be solid. Through the future, regardless of who the parties are that are involved. So that we're not keeping track of, are they still married, are you guys still talking to each other? Um who who's taking care of the barn? I I just wanna see us cook out something that gives them the access that they want. But is durable through the future regardless of who the property owners.
And what trail we're talking about, right, like this is about this trail, but there's other trails.
Do we wanna allow development on trails?
But what 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 you're bringing up doesn't, i- i- isn't that what we did at the planning commission with subdivision?
Well, subdivision, you have to have frontage on on a high, on a town highway and a trail is not a town highway.
Class four is.
Which you've given permission.
But but when you're talking about the future and longevity and the the all of that stuff, you're you're back to. Creating a lot. That is usable in the future. In what we talk about.
Providing access to a lot that's durable over time, not a specific agreement for this. Particular situation in these particular parties that may not hold up in the future.
Well, that's why I'm thinking subdivision is probably.
I don't see that subdivision is necessary in this case. There is a freestanding lot, it's naturally created by the roads that surround it. There's no other helps on this lot, so subdivision isn't necessary.
Okay.
If they wanna divide the house off from the barn.
Then that becomes.
They still have frontage on the center road here, whether it's accessible or not, it's never been required.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This lot has usable frontage on two class three town highways, in fact, Stana Road is class two.
Should we ask for review from the D R B on this?
I don't think so, I think. The question is, do we want to? Set a precedent by allowing residential development off of a trail. That that for me is my case. I'm I'm more comfortable, yes, it's just probably an academic exercise, but I'm I'm more comfortable with. Upgrading, reclassifying that section of this trail to a class four, it was class four before. Put it back to a class four and then give them permission to have their driveway off. Then it becomes a highway. And that for me solves a lot. Regardless of your point.
Yeah, and be be in a separate lot, you know, you know, if you lose your barn, that's that's on you.
Yeah, you might have to move it across.
And if we're diligent about it, the trans, changing it from from a trail, I understand your point completely. Um if they're changing it to that section to a class four. Could take place fairly rapidly with a few meetings and you guys come out and visit and all that.
To see the pretty view and all that, I don't, I don't see that as a.
Well, maybe preamulate it in the pouring rain.
I'll bring my. Do we have to survey it? That's always been thrown up every time we try to reclass by the Crown Point Road to a trail. We have to survey.
Yeah.
We reclassified part of Katy Hill Road without surveying. We went from a class three to a class four and it was not surveyed.
We uh.
Class three to a trail.
Well, whatever it was, you reclassified it without surveying, so it's not like we've not done this before.
What's the one off Katy Hill that goes up to Benham's?
It's a ground.
That that one got upgraded.
Was, yeah, it was changed.
I I don't think that was.
Right.
You're still gonna have a can of worms if you take a trail and turn it into a class four so they can use it for their driveway. How do you get, what's gonna happen with every trail in town if somebody wants you to turn that into a class four?
The same legal basis.
Right, but you're still gonna be insane, you're gonna have to really do. What's the policy for, what's the criteria for making a trail to a class four?
It's in statute.
I I guess my point is, if I came to you and I said I wanted to make. Another trail in town, a class four, you told me no, because you want to keep that a trail, how can we tell them, yes, you can tell me no? That's the point I'm trying to make with.
Every case is different.
Yeah, you you have to review each phase separately, because every phase is. Does that go where you are at the public? We have a public meeting that gets formed, um we notify others. I think if we're gonna go through the class four road process, that's fine as well.
In this case, Steve Butter's is pretty short. So is there anything we have to do tonight for this or?
I I guess I'm just kinda looking for some direction, do we wanna go to class four road process or? Does the board want me to kinda move in the direction of using the trail for the access? Do you guys wanna see what both options look like for the next meeting?
I don't want this to drag down too long for these.
Yeah. We already did drag it on a little bit because I was looking at your guidance from town council on this. Yeah, I'm gonna take a couple of couple of meetings, get back to it, um which is in a. Request to rush the process.
Well, I I'm just. Perhaps the question you've got to do is find out about that motorized vehicle thing that used to be paying. If that's.
I put something into the L C T, the municipal system center to ask that question, I couldn't find any statutory reference to that, but I know it was in place on the ancient roads.
There should be a number for it and it would have been repealed, would it be in our, in somewhere located in the ministry documents of our ancient roads?
I I didn't come into the ancient roads. I put in a request for.
I I. And 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 maybe that solves the part of that problem, but. You're still talking about a trail and and you know driveway access.
Well, in this case, the trail is not being used as frontage. Technically. If it was being used as frontage, I would be adamant about. But it's not, there's plenty of frontage on this lot to satisfy that. They just want a driveway. Fine, right.
Would be okay. To come back to the select board, do the avenue for both. And answer all the questions and then they can make a choice to whether go to class four or keep the trail. Yeah, get more answers on the motorized vehicle and the process and all that.
Absolutely, I can have that prepared for the next meeting.
June twenty third?
Yep, that's the way the board wants, you know.
If 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 that's where we go, the we appear on all request to upgrade a class four road exactly the same time, so we get to the finish line together.
That way we go the whole process for both and you guys can make a decision based on what we come back with.
Do you? You wanna see what a general policy would look like for legal show use as well?
Uh not.
Okay, I'll get that out.
Let's bring this to the finish line.
All right. Thank you.
We'll see you at our next meeting.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Start rolling down, we'll 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 figure it out.
Yeah. Okay, next item, number ten, purchase and policy, the second reading.
Um so what's your interest in this?
Um so there there have been some changes, um I received uh input from the treasurer and also the accountant. Um on the purchasing policy, we also made the changes that you requested in the last meeting, which is number one. Um section three point two. Removed the phrase except for employee reimbursement, we'll continue to use the existing one, it's been working well um. Section three point two, we added the requirement that all visiting needs must be approved in advance by the town accountant. Which is like if Ray State Lieutenant wanted to designate a person within the highway department. To be able to make purchases on his behalf, the accountant would just need to be notified about that and prove it. Um. Section three point two removed the sentence, employee reimbursements for regardless of the amount require a purchase order to be prepared. Again, our existing form is working well, um and it seemed to be fine with the treasurer and also the accountant, um and so. Uh section three point three revised the wording by changing between to over, adjusted the threshold from five oh one to five hundred. And add up to four two thousand. Three point three updated language. To do not require the approval in advance from the town manager, but should be submitted to the finance department within seventy two hours. Um and again, that's just so that the accountant can be informed. Um on any purchases that are made, so she has an understanding when it comes to the orange. Sections three point four replaced between with over and add up to. And then we added a new clause for employee reimbursements, section three point eight.
What's there? Forgive me, this is a dumb question, the things that are eligible for reimbursement. Is that categorized somewhere listed somewhere provided in the purchasing policy?
Um so we, the way we define that is um. As a, as an account expense that an employee made, so like if. And they create in the highway department, for example, employees purchase boots and they get reimbursed for them. Um. Also occasionally if a employee goes to a conference and then decides to stay overnight, we pay for it in advance, we would reimburse. That would help expenses. Uh. There are other common expenses, like when the fire departments um. Are going on scene and they buy coffee and donuts and they ask for reimbursement for that, um so it's it's a wide, sometimes it's pizza.
Have there been any? Difficulties with that?
Years ago, like.
But for the most part, people understand, they need to either ask ahead of time, is this eligible, or they make the correct assumption.
I haven't had any issues since.
Okay, I don't wanna make it an issue if it's.
Yeah, since twenty twenty, I think was the last issue with expense for reimbursements, um and it was. There it up.
So if it becomes an issue, we could always spell it out, but.
Absolutely.
Right now, it's not a problem.
No, not at all.
Yeah, it it seems like if it was a request for something, it would be an issue, it would be denied.
As long as they seem to ask. If they don't, and assume it's gonna be okay and it's not, then it's.
Well, problem for them.
I don't wanna make it a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone's very reasonable.
Yeah.
That I've worked with in the past and currently.
And and this is all receipts, receipt.
Yeah.
It's free, it's called reimbursement, it's, you know, you gotta do some receipt for the hotel room or the booths or whatever.
The biggest issues we're having in the past is not receiving receipts. And um we didn't like that too much because like. You go to the pizza shop, you get a couple of pizzas, we just wanna be sure that it's not there or anything in there, it's something that the treasurer really wanted. Um. But just so that we can. Have a newspaper that shows it, plus it, I don't think any employee would actually ask for reimbursement, but. Maybe it went back for no.
Maybe so, shall we do the third reading?
Okay.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Third reading next time.
And uh.
Yeah, Brian Gombart, you're up next for the nuisance and unkept property ordinance.
Okay. Is that in your package, cause I didn't see it in there?
I don't see it either. Yeah, Ryan, I didn't have it in my email. I think I just texted and asked if you had sent it.
Okay, you you read the email that uh it was shared with the the town attorney. Um he was still reviewing it, we weren't sure if he was gonna have any comments in time for tonight's meeting. Um he hasn't, he has some general comments, you know, that. In ordinance is a good idea, it's probably the the more effective way to handle these issues. Um but I have a draft, he's reviewing it. Um do you, how do you wanna handle, do you want me to sort of go over the the gist of it, just so you're familiar with it when it comes around again? Um or do you wanna wait for that? I have it up, basically I could tell you the purpose and how things are defined and how it works generally.
Ryan, you can also share your screen if you'd like.
Okay.
I want to get some request access for you here.
Yep, I sent a request. Yep, I sent a request. Okay. Are you seeing it? You want to make it bigger?
Well.
That work? Can you hear me? Is that working?
Yeah, it's working. We're just like reorganizing the screen a little bit from the top.
Well, I think generally though, just give us a summary, because I want to end this.
Sure, so I'll just, I'll read you the purpose and then we'll go through kind of how it works. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect public health, safety and welfare, preserve neighborhood character and promote responsible property stewardship by providing the town. With a comprehensive framework to identify, respond to and resolve conditions on properties that constitute nuisances or unkempt property. The ordinance is designed to work in coordination with zoning, health and solid waste laws. To provide the town with a flexible and enforceable set of tools, including and. The including the ability to abate violations and recover associated costs via enforceable liens. And so when when we talked the first time, I just sort of brought it up as a general question about how the board feels about this issue. Of properties becoming um overrun with with junk and discarded items or or things that people say are their. Their possessions, um hoarding situations, different things like that, that I get. Somewhat frequent um complaints about and the zoning. Path for violations and compliance is just not that um effective or cost efficient. So if if I were to issue a violation on a property. Um, for this this reason, um. One of the avenues that's been tried in the past under past administrators. Um, is to issue a violation that the property owner is operating a junkyard. As defined without a permit to do so. Um, and that has been appealed to the the zoning board in the past. Who basically said that the zoning bylaw, the definition was too vague, um and it wasn't enforceable. And so since then, nothing's changed with the the definition of that, but um. Even if the board upheld it, um, and there was a active violation on the property. In theory, that means that it gets fined on a daily basis, but in practice, it does need to be. Um, the the select board needs to dictate that this goes to the court and then the environmental court needs to agree. Um, with the town's decision and they then set the the fines and the amount. Um, and when they become effective, usually they're a little bit more lenient, they'll give you six months to clean up. Uh, where maybe this has already been going on for six months or or more. Um, and so the primary difference is that instead an ordinance on its own, separate from zoning. Has the ability to create a lien on the property and um issue. Fines kind of like um ticketing fees. Um. So there's a definition section that talks about what a nuisance. Property is and what unkempt property is and how those are different. Um, it defines who the enforcement officer is and a person which is an individual or a group. Um, basically a landowner. Um, so those are some things that we that might be worth discussing after you have some time to look at it is those definitions and I'm sure that the attorney will have some. Some advice on those. Um. So there's, I guess, the next section had just sort of clarifies what, um. What this ordinance does and then the enforcement framework. Section basically says there there could be a zoning option if that's the best way to handle it. Um, it and it can be handled through a notice of violation. If there's a health situation like um. Someone has a lot of garbage and it's bringing in um rats or something like that and there's documentation. Another issue that's been kind of hard to move forward with because the documentation of that is difficult. And it doesn't really address things ahead of time. There has to be rats already causing a public health problem. Um, before anything can be done there, but that that's still an option. Um, we do have a solid waste ordinance. Um, it doesn't talk about enforcement or anything like that. Um. But another potential avenue and then under this ordinance. Um, the enforcement officer would issue a municipal complaint. I'm not sure if that's the appropriate term, the uh the attorney will. Will clarify that. Um, and the violations will be subject to penalties and so there's a section that talks about how those penalties work. Um. So it talks about um. Violations that don't get resolved, um and how the town can um. Can recover any costs associated with this. Um. Cost incurred by the town shall be billed to the property owner. And if unpaid after thirty days, the town may record a cost as a lien against the property and. That gives the town some actual leverage to uh to. Take take their own action. Um, and so in practice, sometimes what that looks like and I I think I brought it up last time is. What Windsor has done in the past from time to time is. Get a dumpster and put it on the property and say fill the dumpster and we'll get rid of it or something like that. Um, maybe that means that they'll bill them afterwards. Ultimately, what we're, what the goal is is compliance and fixing the issue. Um, so if that's paying for a dumpster fixes the issue, that might be a whole lot cheaper than going to court. Um, and then so the next section talks about the penalties. Um, and those numbers are just sort of starting points and uh the attorney and and you all. Should look at those and whether those are appropriate or not. Um. And then. Let's see, in addition to penalties, the town may seek injunctive relief, including cleanup orders, entering the property to abate the condition. Um, recover all associated abatement costs from the owner and file lien on the land records. Um. That's that's the majority of it. Do you have any questions on that?
I'm hearing what it says.
Well, I I've got a lot of them, but I mean, not right now until I have the document completely to go over and. And look at. Um.
Any questions just about the concept? Of enforcing these things?
The the one question I did have written down is, and I know we've had this in our town, um where the state. Uh, was notified that that there's some language where the state has to actually come in and declare a junkyard.
Yeah.
Right? I think that's in statute. Yeah, and we we don't actually get to make that determination. We we have to ask the state for them to come in and and give that determination.
I'm just going to direct that to the land use administrator next question.
I think that depends if we're going to be pursuing it as a state enforcement action or a town enforcement action. If we want the state to do the work, um, they obviously need to make sure it meets their definitions. But if we're going to pursue it as a zoning violation, it just has to meet our zoning violation, your our zoning definitions. Um, and the problem with the state enforcement is their capacity, they're such a. Uh, it's such a big area and the number of these types of properties is really high. Um, and. Their ability to address some of the smaller ones, which would be the majority of what we're dealing with is. It it doesn't do, it doesn't do much.
All right, well, I answered that question. Um, yeah, i- in definitions, there's definitely some things that need to be clarified, like interferes with. Um, in number one, um, what would be considered interference? Uh, vice by neighboring property to somebody reasonably, someone's reasonable use and enjoyment of their property.
Mm hmm.
That would have to be specifically, you'd have to know what that interferes, if what rises to interference. I I'd have to know what that is. Um, I mean, creates some sign that that's obvious. The other violates, I mean, the the other, the rest of it's pretty obvious, but interfering, if that's big. You know, what does that mean? You know, I mean, is it so bad that it's blocking the road and I can't get to my property?
Well, I think if someone wanted to submit a complaint about a property and that was the only section of this ordinance that applied to their situation. Um, I guess I can think of like rats might be a a situation like that and maybe the health. Or the health order is a better path, but um maybe not. If they're, if they, you know, can't maintain their, you know, residential use of the property, so if they can't have like a garden or something like that because. Of the number of raccoons and, you know, different things that are there, that might be interfering with their, you know. Residential use of their property. Um, and similarly, a business might have have complaints where. Their, you know, commercial use of their property is impacted by a neighbor's, um, you know, their 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 condition.
That would be one that I would see comes under one. The other, the other couple that you mentioned are three and four, they're already there. But but that, but that's. Identify what yours means. Yeah. Um.
If we could get a copy of that so we can look at it.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So might have more questions that we might want to have clarified.
Yep, definitely.
If if the other, the other thing I am concerned about is, and and this is for the for the town side of it. Is if we were to say, okay, you violated, we're coming on your property and we're fixing your property. That's a scary thing, I think. I mean. If you summed it up to saying that, well, maybe you see that as being a town maybe putting a dumpster there, well, you still kind of got to get permission to do that, wouldn't you?
That that's what this ordinance does, that's that's kind of the the idea. As long as they've met the criteria in the ordinance and they haven't, they've been given a due, it does say after due notice. Um, but they've been given, you know, the due process that's laid out in the ordinance and they failed to comply. Then the next step is, you know, real action, because that's kind of where our current regulations fade out. Is you can say all kinds of things, but you can't, you can't do anything about it. So that I think that's the, that's ultimately the goal of this ordinance. Which is why I'm kind of trying to feel out how the board feels about addressing the the issue. Um, but if it is something that that the board wants to pursue, um, I think that's kind of the idea.
I I I get that and I agree with you, I'm just a little concerned about showing up on somebody's property, even even after with all of this. Uh, you know, that that could be quite a confrontation, even even going through the process. It could still be a a pretty busy confrontation. I I would assume the sheriffs would be there. And stuff, you you could, you could be looking down the paralel. It's a little bit scary situation, I think, that's all. I mean, I know we need to be, I mean, that I understand.
So I think the next step was would be to get it in writing, right?
Yeah.
One and and see what the attorney also says.
If we could get, if we could get a copy of that and then after we hear back from the attorney, we'd like to uh go over it again. So we can get our two cents word.
I I got one little more two cents to go with that, Ryan. Um, should we ask the D R B uh to also maybe give some feedback on what they think? Planning commission should do with the zoning bylaws to work with this.
I I have just one one question on.
Well, I got a question for the floor first.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know that, I guess that question is too, Ryan.
Okay.
Should the D R B advise on this ordinance?
Um, not not on this ordinance, but uh should the D R B uh uh review the ordinance and review. Um, the zoning bylaws that that are referenced, because there are some references to zoning bylaws in the ordinance, right? Is there something more that could be done that that would be that they might? Uh, request the planning commission look into um. Dealing with within the zoning violence.
I think that might be more of a planning commission question, the D R B basically. Operates the what the but with what the bylaws are, I don't think they've dealt with many um. Of these types of issues, there's that one that I mentioned for maybe five or six years ago. Um, that that was an appeal from a notice of violation was issued in the. The uh, the I guess, the violator appealed. Um, but other than that, I don't know if they've. They've, you know, that's really in their wheelhouse. It's kind of a legislative question. Should something be done in the bylaws to address it?
I I understand that and being being one of the planning commissioners, I was kind of trying to get some help from somebody else while we're tied up with the town plan.
Maybe, I just don't think it's their role.
No, they could make suggestions to us, I guess, is what I was looking for.
They could make suggestions.
That that kind of thing, that they would help us because like I said, we're we're we're, we don't have a town plan right now, we're kind of focused on getting through that. And we've still got a ways to go, you know that. You've done a lot of great work there. Uh, and anyway.
Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to add that, uh, well, I agree with most of that, especially when it comes to the health or junk and this and that, well, I would also add that if. If someone's property is so bad that it lowered the value of your property, should you try to sell it? But adding to that, I would say having owned several acres in the Midwest in a H O A, I would also want against the town. Starting to operate like an H O A and like who's policing it, what what is decided, who's deciding what is unkempt, you know, I mean. Uh, you know, we we dealt with that there where a guy did operate on a small. At a small body shop, he had a couple, two or three pads up back, the H O A said, no, you can't do that. Um, you can do that, it's, you know, these might be pass tests, you know, he. Uh, I would want about, you know, like, you know, it's, you're you're thrown out in the ground, so.
There 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 might be a need to identify a level.
Yeah.
Like if you're dealing with a junkyard or a health hazard, um, you know, just what that is. Might need to be more clearly disclosed.
I mean, that that happened years ago with a with a with a body shop, you know, too, it's, he had cars and. He he will be honest, hey, what's that they don't know himself, because he said I couldn't operate. In this town, so.
Okay. Janette Road discussion.
It's a good job, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
This was the board, Janess Road. Yeah, I have brought this up, the folks on Janess Road, I have trouble getting packages because ever since the name was changed. From Schoolhouse Road to Janess Road. GPS and nobody can get.
Nobody.
Yeah, I can speak to that as well. Um, and and another resident on the road had told me that and kind of confirmed it. It's it's a very similar situation to Stokes Road. Where the GPS sent people in the wrong place and and nothing, nothing could change it, so. The folks on that road came to the board and asked the board to change the name. I think that solved the problem. So I was just wondering would the board be considering, would it consider? Changing the name of Janess Road back to Schoolhouse Road so people can get their deliveries. I know it was your mom that asked to have it changed to Janess Road and I don't remember the reason why. But it was originally intended to be Janess Road.
Pardon?
Was your mom who had asked to have it changed?
I I think, I don't recall that she was the person who asked him to have it changed, but I think it was changed because. Weather shield has two schoolhouse roads and it was changed at the night at the time of nine one one.
Maybe she was the one that said that the name was originally intended to be.
They they were the.
Not to ask us to change it.
They were the first residents of that road, but it is true, GPS can't find. Can't find it, UPS can't find it and the ambulance can't find it.
Um.
FedEx can't find it.
Yeah, they think UPS, they can't, nobody can find it.
So what you have to do is give them um the Windsor zip code, because if you get your nails delivered at home.
Yeah.
But the but the house numbers don't make any sense. My my parents' house is either fifty four or one eighty six. Depending on what you're looking at, because I think we figured out that. When the name was changed for nine one one, the numbers weren't changed, but the numbers don't make sense. Anyway, no one can find you, no one can find you.
Right, so. I was asked if I would do something about it and I thought I'd bring it up to the board.
Okay, good to know, um.
I know we don't have anything to do with nine one one numbering, but we do, we can have a say in the name of the road. It used to be called. It used to be called Schoolhouse Road, we could just put back to school.
Well, but if you have another road that's Schoolhouse Road, like Patty said, can they get?
Would they have a Schoolhouse Road, okay? Um, isn't um. Aston Schoolhouse Road?
Yes.
It's got an Aston, okay. It's called Aston Schoolhouse.
You have you have Ace of Brown Road, you have Brown Road.
Yeah.
You have an Aston Schoolhouse Road, you have Schoolhouse Road, it's not the same.
All right, solves that question.
But going going up the hill is Schoolhouse Road and it used to be all the way. But but now it's up the road to Schoolhouse Road and that leg is Janess Road. But it always was called Schoolhouse.
Springfield's got that above the fire station. You, when you head up the hill and you turn out.
Yeah.
It it it's it's like one and then and then when you turn right, it turns to Wilson. But you don't see, everybody says they live on Wilson, which you, you got like this little section to get there, you know, you can never find it.
There is a little sign that says Janess Road, but if you're somewhere else and you're trying to find it, it doesn't show up correctly on GPS.
But and the ambulance has even gone to the wrong house because of the numbering system being screwed up.
But is there not a way to update the GPS? I mean, didn't Springfield was saying a whole bunch of road names?
We had the same problem with Carley Road. I think that was another one that was a problem. It's just impossible. What do we do with that?
I mean, I don't think it is.
Right.
I mean, we should be.
We have Google and GPS and all those mapping frames and what?
I won't make a joke about any golfs, but um, uh, it seems like there probably is a. Process for registered road. I mean, we're not the only town that has changed names. Your solution might be the easiest.
Our solution is.
I have no idea.
According to the books on the Jones Road, there's Charlie Road.
Yes, but. But somehow or other people, if you if you type in Janess Road, oh five oh three oh, you won't get it. You have to type it as oh five oh eight nine.
Because it's registered in Windsor.
Because the mail comes to you.
Oh, my God.
Right, just like my house, you'd have to type in Springfield to get to it, even though it's in Weatherfield.
Yeah. Five's it goes down.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
And some of them, Windsor, some people that live in Weatherfield and Springfield are.
So this is a federal government issue.
I have Windsor, I have.
Is it?
We have, we have a Springfield area.
You want to say something?
Yeah, if you change the name to back to Schoolhouse Road, isn't it still gonna have the same zip code?
It will.
Mails will come from Windsor.
That's why I wanna I wanna research it. Um, I'll give you guys an update in the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can say I brought it up. I fulfilled the promise.
Thank you so much.
You say you wanted to add to this, Rika?
Um, under future agenda items.
That's where we are.
Yes, okay, um. Uh, questions have been raised lately about whether we became the wastewater feasibility study for Perkinsville? We haven't heard anything from that from a long, long time. Um, and in a conversation the other day, I don't even remember who I was talking with now. Uh, but we were talking about how things get communicated in this town and how hard it is to communicate stuff in this town. And the question arose, would it be possible to have, I guess they're called sandwich boards?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
You know, we have one here about the dogs and the taxes in front of the town hall. But could, would it be possible to have sandwich boards for important meetings or hearings or things like that? That could be, for example, at at Downers, at where Weatherfield Center Road comes into one thirty-one where. You know, in the Scotty at the dump, uh, sorry, the transfer station. Uh, you know, a couple of key places where people tend to go. Um, just so there's more visibility and, you know, cause not everybody reads Front Port Forum, not everybody is on Facebook. Um, we, I think we just need to find as many ways to communicate, get the word out as possible.
When I was at a town manager meeting, actually that and direct mail were were deemed like the most effective at getting the word out.
Yeah, yeah.
The question, the question become on the sandwich board becomes who's who's gonna be tabled?
Yeah, right, right.
That's the problem.
That's scrolling digital signs, you know, that's.
Yeah, it's not endless, actually.
The only one that wasn't in a town right up that state anyway was the Trinity. Everything else is state.
But yeah, you can go with. And the other question was whether in in at the Perkinsville post office, there is a bulletin board where we post. They're both public, there's a public notice board and there's a town notice board. But they're at the, if you come in the front door and most people in fact park around the backside of the building.
Never seen it.
They never see it, are totally unaware that there's a signboard. So I just, and and I don't have no idea what it's like over here in at the Scotty post office.
Rick, what I just heard is lock the back door. Yeah, we we cannot post. I'm sorry.
What is that?
We can't post at the post offices, they stop doing that. Um.
The government won't let you.
Yeah, the one reason we're allowed to in Burtonsville is because that area is actually not controlled by the post office. So in in lieu of uh posting at the Scotty post office now or posting at the library. And.
How interesting.
And at Mark and Rory Hall and then at the.
Yeah.
Burtonsville post office building.
How bizarre.
Yeah.
Isn't it interesting that we pay for all of that and we can't use it? I mean, if it's a government building, it's taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah.
Which makes that us.
Yeah.
I I do pay my taxes.
We went back and forth. I think you were on the board, actually, I think both Kelly and Mike were on the board at that time.
Yeah.
And I, yeah.
I remember. Yeah, legal.
I won't, I've had people gotten fired from the postal department for putting stuff up that they're not supposed to.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's a whole business.
It's a big thing. My grandma read a work in the World War, so I know a lot about the.
So we're not supposed to mention that politics might have worked its way into that?
I don't know. No, yeah, I'm sure it did.
God. What do you need to know?
Yeah, a second, um.
Oh.
Also for future agenda items. We have um some.
I could have something for us, that's why I said that.
Job performance for Brandon.
Oh, yes.
There's some paperwork here. No, you don't get one. Yes. So I didn't know, you guys might wanna look at these. These are something that Brandon printed. Also.
This is what we use for all kind of employees.
You didn't score it?
Should I do a good job? Yes or yes?
When I was looking at it this weekend, I um. I I want to know, I got questions I want to have in the answer, so I don't know if anyone else has questions. Like um. I wanna know, what are your goal or goals for the coming year and how do you plan to achieve them? Um, what support or resources do you need to enhance your performance? I know that he's got a lot on his plate of stuff that. Is consuming his time and upstairs in the office that shouldn't be. So I I just think that there's a lot of questions that maybe someone may have that they might wanna ask him during this performance. I don't know if they wanna ask him prior to the meeting so that he can have time to get answers or.
Do questions of what kind of support do you need actually fit into an evaluation of a person's.
Probably not.
Performance. That that's the 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 first question. What was the very, that one, it didn't seem so bad.
What is your goal or goals for for the coming year and how do you plan to achieve that?
Well, it does have other goals in here. This factor will measure other areas that are applicable to the employee's performance.
But the only thing I worry about, Kelly, is you've given them too much open ended. It's gonna be twelve pages.
Yeah.
I think we're.
Do we, do we actually have a copy of your job description? Is there a job description?
It's a, it's a contract, I can.
Yeah, you can get a copy of the contract, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that should be, that should be with us.
I actually, Kelly, do agree that I think it.
This is just, this is just a checkmark thingy. This isn't not even asking questions.
Well, it is in the back, but I do, I do agree asking what kind of supports to that you can be more successful in. I mean, it's something in my role, like that is something I ask folks when we do evaluations of them.
Uh, Kelly, so the way that, can I have that copy for a second?
Yeah.
So this is the one that we use for all time employees. And you actually, you you check it and then you write underneath it as well.
Oh, okay.
So what we typically do is we we check one of these four boxes and then we write a a paragraph. That correlates to their to their job, so it's.
Uh huh. One would not know that by leaving it.
Hmm. I have two members ask for, you know, you to tell us what you need, so I'm comfortable you writing it down and giving it to us.
All right. Manifesto.
So if you guys wanna just look through this for our next meeting and then we can discuss it then, if that's all right with you guys.
Uh, you don't want us to do it and hand it in?
No, yeah, you can hand it in.
And and then you kind of go over it and then call a meeting for us to come together and uh figure out what we're gonna do with it before you sit down with them and. Tell them what was that.
Okay.
With the.
Yet season? I'm 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 pretty blunt, so he knows. This is just something that you uh that we signed that needs to go in your folder.
Oh, did we advertise it? Cause that was something that we said we should do.
What, what did I tell you?
On the month's evening.
It just needs to go in your folder, those details. So is that what you guys wanna do, fill this out and hand it in?
No.
No, not yet.
No, not tonight. I wanna see the contract.
But I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we should have.
It's still not that.
I have.
My other book. Okay. Appointments, there's no appointments. Any other business?
Well, did we have, did we have marketing?
That was it. That was just something that needs to go in your file.
Mine goes away.
Holder.
Oh, oh, oh.
Your white, white.
Yeah, got it.
Any other business? Somebody on the board, no other business? Approve the warrant.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, I'll see you tomorrow.
Make motion to approve the warrant. General fund, fifteen thou uh payroll, fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Operating expenses, seventy-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Highway payroll, ten thousand one hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents. Operating expenses, four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Solid waste payroll, two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Operating expenses, four thousand seventy-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Library payroll, two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. L A R B project, sixty-four dollars and eighty cents. What is that?
Um. One, one second.
And that's that till after. Grand totals payroll, thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. Operating expenses, eighty-six thousand five hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Discussion?
Littlest Scotty Bridge project.
Oh.
We we couldn't put the whole thing there, so we had to come back.
What was this, those missing bolts or something?
It's for advertising.
Missing bolts or something. It's.
No, there's some truth to what I said. I'm sure it was taken care of. I have no questions on.
I just got, I just got one quick question. What is the prudential retirement? Who gets that? It's on page five of five of the payroll for the general fund. Two hundred and fifteen dollars for two people.
Or twice.
Or the same person twice, yeah, that's right. Oh, it is two different pay dates.
I'm pretty sure I, I know this, do you mind if I still give you the answer at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious. I just don't remember seeing that before.
I'm gonna see.
That's all I had for questions. Any other questions? All those in favor, uh, any extensions? Here is. Motion for adjournment?
So.
Second?
Second.
Adjournment, eight fifty-six PM, all those in favor?